Do you know Ryan? Well, he is a rapper.
Hi, James County Commissioner Corcindor ordered this regular meeting on Tuesday, 28th day of September 2021. It's scheduled at 9:30 a.m., it's 9:34 a.m. And if you're all right, we are proud to have our 4H folks here with us today. Megan would you introduce, just going to do the prayer and the pledges, and then we'll go into 1.1, ready to proclamation.
Yes, Brooke Poole is here. She is with our Chambers County County Council, along with Dustin Poole. He is also a county council member. The Brooke will be saying the pledge and Dustin will be saying the prayer.
Welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I'll bow my head with me. Dear God, thank you for your stay and thanks for letting us be here today and help, help the leaders to have wisdom, God, to make right decisions, God, and do so.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Give me a say. All right, we're gonna go right to 1.1, Discuss, Consider, Proclamation. Designate October 3 through 9, 2021 as National 4H Week in Texas. We commend the 4H Youth Development Program of Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service.
Whereas, the Chambers County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service for 112 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this Admiral Program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including health, heart, hands, and health, helping young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas, it is more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural, rural youth participants, ranging in age from eight to 19, held from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas, the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that is, that it has today, were not, were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources of the youth of Texas. And whereas, throughout its proudly history, the 4H Program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and experienced programs, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now thereof be it, resolve the Chambers County Commissioners Court hereby designate October 6 through the 12th, 2021, as National 4H Week in Texas, and commend the youth, and commend the 4H Youth Development Program of Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Mr. Gores, take it back to Mr. Tass. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. You're going to bring him up. Thank y'all for being here this morning and leading us, and that was great.
Really?
You could do it ever, Cor. Sure. Y'all come on out and we'll get a picture.
Judge, this young man said he'd say it before.
Oh, we have to just stop. Again, you want to get in with us? Got them all.
That's way.
We'll stay up here. I'll let Sue direct her around here.
Oh, you guys are chumming back there.
Oh, they are chumming back here. Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Sue. I didn't know we were chumming back. I know, I know. If you said it, I figured it out. Yeah.
Oh, wait, Wendy Buggler on check. Y'all mind? Those in favor? Oh, most carries. Thank you, Jim. All right, back to some comments. Ryan Holesy full. Just want to introduce the new safety coordinator.
Thank you for that pronunciation. Okay, yes, sir. I would like to introduce Wendy Bola, new safety coordinator, a little bit of better background. She has 25-plus years' experience in safety, health, and environmental quality. 11 years as a safety manager for a combined county city risk management operation. Kind of sounds similar to what TAC would be here. Has a Bachelor of Science from Florida State University, Master of Public Administration from American Military University. And she recently served as faculty in the Analytical Instrumentation Program at Lee College. She's experienced in compliance audits, contract management, facility and asbestos assessment, and served in the safety hazmat and planning positions in a county-level EOC. She also has national certifications as an Associate Safety Professional and Certified Environmental Trainer. And yesterday, we got started, hit the ground running, and we met with the airport. And we're working with them on some of their stormwater permitting, TCQ permitting, compliance requirements that need to be, be tidied up. So, would you like to say?
Good morning.
Just hello?
Morning. Morning.
Morning, welcome.
What about those R panels or T panels?
Glad they're gone.
They already blew away.
M panels, some later.
This is in comedy, I guess I can answer the question.
Sure. No. Would rather not, Jimmy. I'm kidding. I mean, you can.
The first safety report would go out to the Rast Fest, Gator Fest, and straight over.
We did. We went, we went to, to Gator Fest and did walkthrough and provided some feedback, and we plan on doing the same thing for Rastus. Yes.
And I'm not quite into my second or third week yet.
Yeah, right. I don't think she was here during Gator, but we, we did that.
Already done food testing and a few other things.
Well, we're here to help you, so we want you to be successful.
I look forward to making you all look good and keeping everybody safe.
That'd be a chore.
Hopefully, we won't have to wear rubber boots, though, because.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Had a reindeer.
Congratulations or condolences.
All right, one point is Derek. Or just one of you guys can talk about 1.5.
1.5, the first I heard was, was more, I've been off a few days, so I see if Derek wants to jump on.
Okay. Yeah, he's one of the Leonard. And actually says, 1.5, Discuss, Consider Implementation of Vehicle Tracking for County Vehicles in 2022 for the estimated cost of $30,000.
Now, thank you, right, correct. Hammond and I could add a little bit to that.
Yeah, Derek's letter says, Reduction of Addition of Vehicle Results in approximately $17.45 per charge, per month, charge. That could be an agreement done, and get an official quote. But it's $30,000 for all the outside vehicles. I'll let one of you two guys.
I think that's 140 vehicles, isn't it, Commissioner?
Roughly.
Roughly 140 vehicles. What, what these gonna do is gonna give us the ability to see where vehicles are, what they're doing, how fast they're traveling. I mean, it, it covers everything.
Monitor by the department heads?
It will be monitored by the department head. We'll put it on our equipment, dump trucks, and then just county vehicles to hopefully improve.
Increase productivity.
Increase productivity some, Judge. And also, safety, case someone's out somewhere and they get hurt or injured or whatever, we don't hear from them. And we can always track them back by that as well. Hammond, you have anything to add?
No, I just think it can be used, you know, that information can be used during an accident investigation.
Yes.
There's a lot of options there that we can use, so. So, health, protect the county some too, so. And employees. So, right now, the Sheriff's Department has it on their vehicles. Yes.
This is your horizon. Personally, I'm 100% for it.
This is basically the same system, Sheriff's Department. Yeah, I don't know that we need a, 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 this may need to budget it unless you want to vote to budget the money for those outside departments. I guess the parks, road, road bridge, parks.
Solidways.
Solidways, maintenance. Those four, Cor. Yeah, mosquito control, environmental.
mosquito control already has trackers on there.
So, yeah, environmental. Yeah.
And I don't know how many vehicles in total up to, is that those departments?
There's 140. It had, had a mosquito trucks in there too.
How is this gonna affect us on IT?
I, I, I'm not sure, Commissioner. I, I just heard about this this morning, and I sent the Zoom in front of Eric. I got maybe about a second.
Well, I mean, all we're, all we're doing today is you requesting the budget to money for this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, work out the details later.
Yeah, I will say, I know the assistant at the sheriff's office uses, it's, I don't think we actually budget warrants. I think it's pretty much just hands-on remark, so I don't, I don't see much of the impact there.
Now, the, the, on this here, they come out and start with, is that correct?
Uh, if it's, if it's what I'm thinking, it might be like a, like an OBD kind of thing, and Derek just joined on, so.
Okay, Derek. How are you? Morning, Derek.
Can I hear me okay?
Hold on.
You got too bulky. It's not good.
Try that again, Derek.
Yeah, I hear me okay?
Well, I'm doing something wrong here.
What about now? Can y'all hear me now?
A little bit better.
Hey, John, Derek.
Hello, Test.
Barely can hear you.
What, what?
Y'all want me to run upstairs?
No, I don't know that we have any questions for you. I think, actually, you have anything you need to add on 1.5? The tracking for the county vehicles?
All right, you asking me, Judge?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
No, sir, um, that's just, um, information regarding the pricing. If we, if it's decided to move forward, then we can get the, uh, the specific details on all the product to put on a, on a, um, another court coming up.
Okay.
So, that's, um, that's, that's roughly what it would cost to do the county vehicles to add the GPS tracking. So, um, if, if it looks like we want to proceed with that, I can get all the details, official quote and agreement for the county attorney and George to look over, and then bring it back to Commissioners Court.
All right, and Austin said it's not a big burden on IT, correct?
No, so it would, I mean, really, the, the departments, I assume, are the ones that would be like overseeing their own people, and as far as the install, um, I talked to Verizon. They said they can install day or night, um, and it's, they handle the whole installation. So, I don't know. It shouldn't be a huge, huge deal.
All right, any questions, Derek? All right, thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Um, it's up to you. If you want to make a motion to budget those departments to implement the vehicle tracking. Much like Mr. Gore, checking back to Mr. Hammond, those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Run Brea is 3.1, Discuss, Consider Appointing Commissioner to be listed as the owner of county property for sale of 1.761 acre tract of land adjacent to the old fire station. Corey, this is under road and bridge. That's what I asked. Morning, Brad.
No, thanks. So, this is based on the direction of Ms. Ashley Land and citing Government Code 263001, which we're all familiar with. We need to appoint a commissioner for the owner of real property in the county. And this is pertaining to that sliver, uh, just, you know, next to the, to the fire station. So, that is the, the item to appoint a commissioner, rather than the judge, I believe that was Ashley, right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's what the code says.
I'm gonna make a motion if we appoint Tommy Hammond as the owner of that piece of property.
Mr. Collins, take it back to Mr. Gore. Questions, comments? Appreciate the volunteer, I mean. No problem. Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brad. 3.2, Discuss, Consider Setting a Public Hearing for October 26, 2021 for the sale or abandonment of a portion of the unimproved right-of-way of Shetty Glen Drive in Oak Island as requested by Jeff Williams. Corey?
Uh, that is, yeah, go ahead. So, there was, uh, last court, there was a little bit of miscommunication um, on the, uh, court date, or the public hearing, wasn't it?
Oh, by the way, how Texas Tech?
Yeah.
He's already beat up over that.
Yeah, I ain't got that.
That's why he's wearing blue today.
All right, Brad, go ahead.
So, anyway, there was a little bit of miscommunication last court on the, uh, setting of the public hearing for, for this particular item. So, we need, we're required to have a 21-day, uh, period before we can, uh, post and discuss. So, that's, that's why we moved it back a little bit to the 26th.
And motion, motion. Much like Mr. Hammond, second back to Mr. Gore, questions for the favor? Opposed, motion carries, 3.3, approved contract for displaning to Texas Drainage Inc. Amount of 500,000, understanding that unit bid price for each item will not increase. So, Brad?
I think we need to pull that one.
Okay, Cor. Oh, yeah, that's right. You want to pull that one. That's right. Okay. 3.4, Discuss and Consider Charging Impact Fees and Modding Calls to Jindal Sol to ensure no impact to Kilgore Drainage for new development prior to development expansion, Corey.
Okay, so this is, uh, obviously dealing with Kilgore Drainage Project. Uh, we've got a partnership that was on that, a group of partners that partnered with the county to bring that project, uh, to completion. We're near completion now. Jindal Sol had the opportunity to be a part of that partnership, rejected it at the time, and we had to purchase their property. And now they're wanting to tie into it. So, uh, we believe that basically they should have to, uh, essentially follow the same process that we offered before, which would, you know, that they would have an impact fee similar to what the partnerships, uh, the other rest of the partnership had, um, as, as a part of that.
So, who'll figure those costs?
That's the part we don't know yet. It needs to be enough to make sure that it covers the impact of them getting into it. They're tying in downstream. Uh, we know some additional work has to be done. The exact amount, we don't know. We also have on this agenda to, uh,
Right.
get some engineering work done on that. So, I think, uh, my motion would be that we approve this with an amount to be determined by the county, determined and approved by the county engineer.
Second. Much like Mr. Collins, take it back to Mr. Tass. Questions? For the favor? I oppose the motion carries, 3.5. Discuss, Consider Approving Additional Work Required Pacheco Cope to Establish and Improve Kilgore Drainage As Built.
Okay, so this is, uh, the rest of that, essentially 3.4. This will help us make that decision for, uh, those fees. We, as y'all are aware, we've, we've had a long history with, uh, Paul Lipke and, uh, his group in, uh, trying to complete this project. We've been in a process of, uh, him trying to, trying to gain this as-built out of, uh, Paul for over two years, essentially. And we just can't land it. Uh, so, um, we believe that, uh, Pacheco Cope, which is Jim Roberts, essentially, has been a part of that. He's, he's already done about 95% of the work. So, for a very small portion of, uh, additional fee, then we believe that we can get this as-built and also determine, uh, what impact fees would be associated or needed for, uh, Jindal Sol and for completing the project. Um, we already have a existing, uh, contract with, uh, his company for providing hydraulic expertise under General Engineering Services. So, this would just be an extension of that hydraulic, uh, contract.
Where's the line coming from?
This would have to come out of the Kilgore Drainage, uh, project.
We have somewhere covered.
That is more of an errant question.
I think there's a little bit left on that tax note.
Yeah, we looked at it yesterday.
And Corey, when we met with Jim the other day, he was supposed to get a price to you. Did he get that to you?
I have not gotten it yet. So, um,
Apparently you've.
Yeah, I was hoping to have that today to slide in, but I did not get that
Tax note.
yet, as far as the, the actual price.
You know, it might be a little bit more because we budget a little extra for the overages, but, uh, I don't know. How much would be left over?
Have we got any of the reimbursements back from the stakeholders yet?
How much are we getting back?
Something or so.
About, about, yeah, 90,000 each. Yeah. How much would you ask my department, Corey? Guess?
I'm gonna say less than 30,000.
So, you want to prove up to 30,000?
That's what I would say, yeah.
That'd be my motion.
Much like Mr. Collins, take it back to Mr. Tass. Those in favor? Oppose, motion carries.
And we can pass some of that cost right back over to Jindal.
Correct. True. 3.6, Discuss, Consider Change Order for SCR Construction to Complete Additional Work on Kilgore Phase 1, Including Removal of Silt and Reestablishment of Slope, Corey.
Okay, so this, uh, we, last year, uh, as SCR was completing the second phase of the project, uh, we had a the court approved us to go in there and do some additional work, do some seeding on Phase 1. The, so we did that from basically the railroad tracks over to 146. And there was a portion in there that was squeezed between what SCR was doing and the railroad track. So, it was really inaccessible. And if we was to get in there and do much, we could have damaged SCR's work, work area. Um, at this point, uh, they're essentially close to being done, uh, SCR. And so, uh, just in the vegetative establishment, we've looked at that, uh, worked with, uh, KTN has taken a look at it, had, uh, some initial bids, looked like it was about $240,000 worth of work. And, um, we talked to SCR, uh, they're willing to give us some price, their own prices for trying to establish that, uh, that work. Uh, like I said, they're already in there. They have done high-quality workforce already, uh, satisfied with their work. Uh, so we'd like to, uh, initiate a change order to, uh, for them to complete that, uh, extra work.
One thing I think is worth mentioning, um, much of the silt that's in that ditch actually came from KTN's, feeding into it. So, we want to need, we need to get a cost share of this with KTN for the silt. I mean, part of it is definitely on the county, but not all of it, still, I believe most of the silt is on KTN.
Well, I started to mention the, the silt coming from KTN, but it's, you know, there's slopes that are definitely washed off of the county portion, and there's stuff, I don't know if it's most or, but there's definitely a portion. And so, KTN will be participating in, um, the cleanup. We've already talked to them about that, and they will participate, so.
Good man, you were there last week, by the way.
Yeah, we just don't have the split cost on it.
So, do you have a cost? Did you mention that? Did I miss it? All right, that's.
I do not have a cost as of yet. There again, this would be continuing negotiations, uh, to me, I, I would say up to the 240, but it's, it's gonna be much less than that. Uh, Billy, I don't know. Do you have a, an idea of how to?
No, I don't. I mean, you know, SCR's got to go back in to, uh, put in the back slope vendors.
Well, that's at, at no cost, though.
I know, so they're gonna be mobilizing anyhow, is my point.
Right. Well, this is true. Right.
Right. So, uh, you know, real, basically, the dress-up and silt. The problem is the silt's a wild card. We just don't know how far it goes into the box cover and what it's gonna take.
Well, and that's something I was gonna mention that, so, in the 240 that we're talking about does not include the box cover. So, even with KT and picking it up, we don't know how far it goes into the pipe, so I would still say up to the 240 is what I, but, I mean, it, it needs to be based on true, you know, uh,
No, I, I agree. It just, I just wish we had more numbers now.
So, I would approve, um, that's negotiated by unit court?
Yeah.
I mean, I know how tight y'all are.
We can bring Gary in if we need to.
There you go.
All right, we do that. I'll give my motion.
Motion back to Mr. Collins, second back to Mr. Tass?
Yes.
You have questions for the favor? Oppose, motion carries, 3.7. Discuss, Consider Working with County Attorney to Establish Noveway Permit County Roads Under Texas Transportation Code Section 63.1018, Corey.
Okay, so this is something, uh, in working with Tech Dot on, uh, the 99, uh, project that Billy's been working on extensively over the last couple of years, uh, to try to get our heavy haul trucks over onto the toll road and off of 146 and some of the other routes, um, I've been working with them to supply our own permit, uh, information that we have for our current ability to permit on state roadways, uh, within the county, of which, uh, there's been absolutely zero permitting for. But, uh, there is a portion, we believe, of, of those same heavy hauls that are on county roads. And under the Senator Nichols bill, um, that's being utilized primarily at 100%, really. And so, we're, that's the reason the other county permit's not being utilized. But this would give us an opportunity to, uh, provide for, uh, a permit, even either an individual or an annual permit, and be able to collect some, uh, fees, um, permit fees that would help us, uh, repair some of these roadways when they get damaged. So, instance, we're, we're, you know, we're looking at about $370,000 to $400,000 on a bear. We just spent, um, I think about the same amount over on Hatcherville. Well, it was actually, uh, industry paid for that, but, um, you know, we would be able, this would provide us a, uh, a pot for being able to do that. And, you know, essentially, you know, whatever happens over on Kilgore, there's other, other routes that we could utilize this on that would help, uh, provide some funding so that we're not, uh, you know, trying to look for, uh, industry to cover it after the fact.
So, they're paying 6,000 a year per truck to the state?
Annually, yes. And out of that, I believe they said that we're supposed to get like 5% of that overall into the road and bridge fund. But I'm not sure if that's, I don't know how that's determined. And, uh, the, the attorney that I talked to with Tech Dot basically alluded that it's not enough money, uh, overall. And she actually was the one that.
But we're not giving it. You should be. I mean, we still should get it, whether it's enough money or not.
Well, she said, well, I don't know how they're determining what the 5% is based on. Is it 5% of every permit that's in the county, is it 5% of ones that they determine potentially could come over our roadways? And is it 5% that's split with the cities potentially? Um, so, for instance, like, uh, Hatcherville is actually within the city of Mont Belvieu. And so, we're. uh Hatcherville is actually within the city of Mont Belvieu. And so we're probably not getting any of that.
Yeah, I know for a fact that Beach City has actually gotten money back on that. And you know, they uh, we maintain all of their roads. So I, I think that's something we need to look at and just see how many uh, or how that money has been distributed back. And you know, rightfully, it, it needs to go to whatever entity is maintaining that road.
Correct. Yes. And so uh Ashley's looked at it. She sent me an email and said that she believes that it could be done. I'll let her speak for that. But and then I also have seen that uh Jefferson County is already uh issuing similar permits. They have an annual permit and a trip permit, so.
So Jefferson County is your state?
Uh, yes, it appears so.
I bet you those, all those small counties down in Agle, Agle for sale have done this also.
So.
Yeah, I'd like to get with them and see how they're doing.
It's one thing to implement it. It's another thing to figure out how you actually. I mean, it's one thing to prove it, but implement's a different story.
Yes, it is.
How, how do you track it?
Right. Well, and I think it also takes law enforcement to maybe checking and issuing tickets and things. So yeah, there is a lot to look at to make it, if we can.
Yeah. Well, you'd think your, your enterprises, your exons would. Now, there's, would be some others to.
But these are only the ones that are hauling eighty-four thousand pounds or more.
Right.
Right.
It, well, actually, any indivisible load is what I believe she, she mentioned. So.
That's what the state permit is. We went through that years ago.
Right.
Like pellets.
So the containers normally, I think they're, they are hauling at the eighty-four thousand.
Right.
Uh, it, it's considered in, well, yeah, but it's considered, I think that's what most of them are doing. But that's the reason it's considered indivisible because it's in a container that once it's, once it's sealed in the container, taken to the port, it's never opened. So they consider that indivisible. But normal indivisibles would be like, you know, uh like some of these mining equipment, like one tire might weigh forty thousand pounds or whatever, you know? And that's, that's in its smallest portion. They can take it off the axle, but they can't take it down any smaller than that. So that would be indivisible. So.
So what about when they bring in the oversized loads that are, they're bringing in some this weekend? And they actually run down Hatcherville Road.
They.
Are we getting anything out of that?
They use the same state permit, I assume.
They're getting a one-time trip permit as an indivisible load.
Bill's for exports only. So there's a difference, you know, they, that's what anything within fifty miles of a port that's outbound exporting.
Right.
But I, I think all the other permits are individual permits.
They are individual permits. It's not part of the Nichols bill. Right. So I mean, I, I don't know theoretically, we should be getting something off of it, but I mean, I have no way of tracking that or to know at all. So this would be something, you know, once they leave the state roadway system coming down a county road, we're not excluding them for being able to make that, you know, that movement, but we're just asking for them to pay for the associated damage that they're creating.
Yeah, I talked to uh D P S yesterday about the, the heavy, the big loads, like coming off the channel and stuff. And he said that they're only required to get state permit. So they don't get anything to the county, which we don't have a permitting system. So it makes sense, but.
Well, we probably address that as we addressed at the summit.
Yeah.
Well, we, we do have a system that we're already paying for uh through ProMiles for that system. And we get weekly emails basically saying that it hasn't been utilized. And that's part, the state requires us to maintain that system um as a part of the legislation that they passed what six years ago or something like that. So um anyway, it, I'm, I would think that could be expanded uh and utilized. You know, and I don't, I'm not sure if it would, you know, when they come in like a dump sticker, you know, you'd get a overweight permit sticker that's an annual or something like that.
Got any emails on that about a year.
I, I'm still getting them.
Are you?
Yeah. So actually, that's what I sent to the state, just basically verifying that, you know, there's not. And then, you know, I asked for like a two-year audit of, and it was zero in two years uh that they've had, so.
And just a note on Hatcherville Road, Enterprise and Exxon offered up that money to pay for that entire job, which was run around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So and they led the job. So this money that didn't you know, costs the county. So, but they're, they're not gonna do that very often.
Right. But the problem is, is that not everybody out there causing the damage participated in the process.
That was my problem. And that's why I asked about the permitting deal.
Right.
Because those, those guys aren't doing that much damage to the road.
Right.
There, there's a lot more culprits out there than them.
Right.
Them too. So they did it in their own interest. Right. Irregardless, we got, we got the road fixed, you know?
Well, Calke, Calke hauls for Exxon Mobil. So I mean, you know, they're basically, that's probably a flow-through for Calke too.
Well, they were invited to the meeting and they.
Yeah, but I'm saying, they're basically one of the same. Calke just lose for example. You're just a contract mover.
Yeah. Well, and yeah, I don't know. I'm, that's true. Uh, I was, you just got me thinking though. There's uh, just wondering.
Poltech.
Right. So others. And then um, you know, once, once ninety-nine goes in, you get the bridge, uh they're over one forty-six, it's gonna restrict some height. So I'm not sure if we're not gonna end up getting some some bit of different movements or something like that because of ninety-nine at some point. I don't know. I, I'm sure they can cross it like they do down uh by five sixty-five, uh probably the path, mostly anyway.
Well, look, I'll make a motion that we, we approve this and that uh the county attorney come back with, with, with the, with the township plan.
First back to Mr. Collins, second back to Mr. Hammond.
All right, so. One, one comment real quick.
Yeah, I, I wanna make sure we were straight on the motion. It's um um approving the county attorney to move forward on put the plan together, but.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
He had to come back with us, wants the plan. She's got a plan together.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Dan.
I just said, it's specifically addresses Hatcherville Road, but it just needs to be county roads.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make that change in my motion. That's for county roads.
All right, you got amended, amended motion in a second.
Yes, sir.
All right, I got amended motion amended second. Any other questions? All cleared and muddened now. Pose in favor? Uh, I was, much carries Danny to get over? Good, girl.
All right, three point eight, discuss consider allowing road and bridge to temporarily close Bear Road if needed, Corey.
We're, we're hoping this is not necessary. And I think uh Billy mentioned this in the last uh special meeting that uh Cavestro has actually asked that if the patches that we do at this point uh fail before we can get out there and um get it repaired under the bid that's uh currently advertised, that uh we shut down the roadway for safety purposes. And so um just asking for that, uh it would be a last uh last ditch effort, which is not something that we anticipate, but just wanna have permission in case it's necessary.
Might add, road might be closed now for construction anyhow, once it's, once we get it.
Well, that is true. Yeah, we have it in the plans. So that was one of our ways to uh save some money is to actually shut that down and change the concrete from H E S over to Class P, uh which is a little more friendly on price.
Then most.
Second, first by Commissioner Collins, second back to Mr. Tass. Those in favor? Uh, pose, most carries, three point nine, discuss consider a variance allowing the release of the electrical permit with a construction bond require, requiring completion of stormwater detention, Corey.
Okay, so this is um in reference to a existing problem that we have now. Uh, but also we've had um issues over the last couple of years where uh people have asked for variances and we've given a variance and said, well, you've got thirty, sixty, ninety days, something like that, depending on the situation, to come back and uh complete your items. We, we generally, we hold the electric portion of uh the permit until we get the drainage approval. Most of those cases that uh people have gotten variances on, they have not come back and followed through. And we've already released electricity. There's really nothing else that we can do to hold them accountable. So uh it was just a point of, we got thinking about this current situation and then also kind of the uh situations that we've had in the past and feel like maybe a bond is the best way of handling that. Um, I've talked to uh one of our partners um this morning, actually, and he supports that as a solution for their situation as well. So.
To allow them to move forward.
So it allows them to move forward, yes.
To be protected.
Right. So hopefully it's a win-win solution where we don't have to hold them up on uh stuff. We go ahead and release electricity. It puts the burden back on the individual that's building the pond and not necessarily uh not necessarily the uh, the business that's, so in some of these situations, just so you know, uh like industry, industry builds the ponds and then they sell the spots around it for warehouses or other facilities. So um the only way we've had to be able to hold these ponds is that we hold the individual with the permit for the warehouse, because that's the one that has the electricity. Uh obviously, in the initial pond, there's not, there's not that process. So anyway, this would solve that issue to where we can allow that to be, to, to go in place. But the pond has to be completed prior to the warehouse or they would forfeit the bond. So.
So how are you gonna determine the bond amount again?
Um, that is a good question. And uh I think it, I um, I, to me, I think it would be uh something like fifty percent of the, the, of the, of the project cost uh for the, for the pond, the pond, for the pond construction, you know?
So if everything failed and we had to go back to bond, which I really don't think that would happen, but if it did and you only got fifty percent of it, how's the county wanna cover the other costs?
Well, that's true. I mean, that's based on, on them at least trying to do something. If they don't do anything at all, then it needs to be a hundred percent. So maybe that, maybe that is the answer.
I'd say it'd be enough to finish the project.
Okay.
Project may already be fifty percent done.
You're right.
Maybe nothing. I don't know.
So when they come to the county, you're pending anything.
Right. It, it needs to be enough to do the project that it takes to get it in compliance.
That's, that's a really good way of looking at it. Yeah, like the.
Whatever that number would be, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, or whatever.
Whatever the number would be. We don't know. But it needs to be an engineer's estimate of what it takes to do the project.
To complete it.
Right. Well, we've had ponds, you know, smaller ponds are in the hundred thousand dollar range and stuff. I know I've seen others that are up in, you know, even a million dollars.
And we've seen those half a million.
Right, yes. So.
All day long. So what keeps them from just not doing the detention?
The bond.
The bond. They gotta pay what it's gonna cost them to do it.
Hold their feet to the fire. Well, that's true.
You gotta realize, this is a situation where it's industry, it is, you know, T G S or I think almost to do this is really T G S in the airport. Uh K T N started to do it, but they're doing their own. So, you know, it's they're gonna do the pond. You know, it's just our way of guaranteeing.
They, the one I'm talking about today, yes, is the uh, is, is somebody that's coming after permit after permit. And obviously, if they're once we catch a bond and, you know, that's not what we would prefer. We need the ponds out there. So at that point, we would hold all additional permits for that industry until they get, come into compliance. But you know, for the, for the smaller guy, I, you know, I, I suppose that is um some bit of an issue, but I would certainly think that's not something they wanna do either. So.
Yeah.
Never come, I mean, we had that discussion on that last B R C, them getting their, us giving them electricity.
Right.
So before they had their detention done, so.
But in this way, you can do that.
Right.
If they put a bond on them.
It's the only solution that we can think of that, you know, where we can still ultimately get what we need.
And it gives them the choice.
Right. It, right, exactly. So.
And kind of motion. Go for a hundred percent of the detention cost?
A hundred percent of what it remains to establish the detention.
Yeah. So whatever percentage, um yeah, I'm trying to think out of this. Yeah, I'm trying to.
A hundred percent of the remaining cost.
Okay.
My Christian Tass. Second, second back to Mr. Collins. With the favor.
I.
Pose, motion carries. Three point ten, discuss consider entering into the agreement with K T N. Found a turn lane as part of the Kilgore Parkway widening project and line taking in access in Kilgore Parkway now without the turn line, Corey.
Uh, yes, sir. So we've been meeting with uh K T N as they develop their property. Uh, we are working with them on drainage and on their project for tying in. Uh, again, they're wanting to complete so that they can get the facilities open. Uh, as we mentioned before, we had some issues with traffic. Um, and this would essentially be solved through the uh agreement that we were talking about with Tech Dot and State Highway ninety-nine. We feel like we're very close to uh having something from Tech Dot to be able to put heavy haul on ninety-nine. So I, I think that we're gonna get that approval sometime in October. And when we do that, we have a uh assurance from K T N that they will push their traffic uh that direction. And so uh this would be uh approving that tie-in so that they can go ahead and start operations uh with an approved agreement, uh written agreement, um verifying our well, verifying the terms.
And we did discuss this in our meeting with K T N Thursday. And the caveat to it, it's not in the item, is that it's subject to a written agreement that they will put one hundred percent of their container trucks on ninety-nine once the heavy haul restriction is removed. And so I, you know, I'll make that motion that we approve it, subject to a signed written agreement that states that we'll uh put one hundred percent of their uh heavy haul trucks on ninety-nine once the restriction is removed. And we'll need to get with you to wrap that up.
All right, get a motion. Sorry. Back to Mr. Collins, second back to Mr. Hammond. Questions? Favor. Uh, pose, most carries. These are road and bridge dockets. Y'all pick up the whole bucket.
Sorry. And there is, uh, I guess just one more. Is, is there anything on uh twenty-two through twenty-five that y'all would like to discuss?
I understand twenty-two through twenty-five, any questions?
I have twenty-five.
Go ahead.
Just Corey and I spoke briefly in the hall, but um just for the cost for the construction management.
So that, well, you want me to go ahead and?
Yeah, go ahead, man.
Okay, so. All right, so this is uh, we talked about S E R. Um, and, and y'all gave us approval for uh moving forward with trying to negotiate a price on that and, and move forward with that. Uh, Pacheco Coke uh has uh essentially well, Jim Roberts is a portion of Lipkey that has been a part of this overall project. And I would just say that he's the only bright star uh in that group. Uh, and so that I have worked with, let me say that. And so they have uh Jim and um Cliff Parts has been uh overseeing the construction management through that as we are um doing away with our uh relationship with Paul Lipkey. Uh, we would like to, or I would like to pick up Jim Roberts to oversee, continue to oversee the construction management of that project. Uh, I think he's done a very good job. And uh, so like I said earlier, we already have a existing contract for him to do hydraulics uh work as an expert in hydraulics. Uh, we don't, I don't think the contract, it is a general engineering service contract. Uh, so I think we could easily uh add to that contract in this one fashion. But I just wanna make clear that it's for construction management, not hydraulics.
So is there percent cost for construction of the construction?
There is. Oh, sorry, there is, yes. Um, and I don't have that with me today, but there has been that we've agreed to um on the rest of the project.
All right. So it would basically be just picking up where it was left off with fifty car right?
Right, for the, just for the additional, not for the whole project.
Right. And that's just that little strip that we've got to uh clean out the silt and uh dress the walls up.
Correct.
Really not much.
And it would be, and so it, and it would be over the portion, the full portion that they'd be looking at and inspecting regardless of whether or not um K T N pays for their, their portion.
Is he gonna be able to? Is he gonna be able to stamp this project?
He's not in yet.
No, but when he does his modeling, that'll be stamped.
So, yes, I mean.
Projects are stamped, it was engineered by, and, you know, we.
Well, that would be under what we've already approved in that other element, uh, for the drainage, the asphalt.
Right.
Uh, to the thirty. So, is what we anticipate is through that drainage, uh, that hydraulic, uh, as-built determination. And whatever aspect is determined that still needs to be done to bring that into standard and. Having Jindal Saul pay that portion for their fee. Well, and then potentially overseeing that portion of work as well. Um, then we would, we would have that stamped total completion project.
And then in, in addition to that, Jimmy. When the freeze nickel modeling that's going on, we want, we're gonna model that drainage whole system. And we're gonna bring it up to the Atlas fourteen standards. And when we bring it up, and then we can go after grant money to bring that up to the Atlas fourteen. Everything in Baytown's ETJ, the court's already approved, you know, Atlas fourteen on it, so we're gonna bring it up to that standard.
Yeah, what Gindal does, and I went there, the impact fee should cover Jim Roberts' calls.
Are part of it.
At, at, at least a good portion of it, yeah. I, I mean, like Corey said a while ago, the other partners, stakeholders paid dearly to get in there.
I totally agree.
And Gindal had every opportunity in the world to do it, but instead, they played hardball. And not only did we have to buy it, we had to condemn it, it got tied up for two years in court, held the whole project up, so.
They didn't play the same as they played.
I agree.
Right. Scott, any other questions on Corey's twenty-three through twenty-five? Okay, uh, five point one, on nation on development tourism, discuss their prison hot. Put to Oxytocics. Fund application with five thousand dollars made by friends of Chambers County Library System. For the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, there.
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, and I'll be talking about later, uh, I'm gonna go look at the project.
Alright, let us know.
Feedback for you, uh, later on.
Fish, fish tech play.
Now. First of my, Commissioner Gore. Second back, Mr. Tass. The ninety-six, sir.
Alright.
Actually, those things are fun. Yeah.
So does IT department sponsor that one? Nothing, sorry, nerd coming up. Nerd come. Alright, those are favorite. Oh, it was much care, sorry, I couldn't have myself. Alright, BJ's gonna be ready at ten thirty-five.
I'll take quick break.
We'll come back to the public hearing and we'll. God, uh, Commissioner Gore came over after recess, it's ten forty-three AM. And we're going back to three point three. Per contract for disclaiming the Texas Attorney Dean in the amount of five hundred thousand. Understanding the unit bid price for each item will not increase, Corey.
Okay, I talked to George, uh, with purchasing during our break and, uh, he is fine with this, he was. I, I didn't realize that, I had asked for a change in, uh, verbiage, because I thought it would need to be different, but actually George preferred it this way. He said if it's, uh, worded this way, he's, he's good with it, so he's recommended, uh, moving forward.
And actually give it to. First of my, Commissioner Gore, second back from Mr. Tass. Any questions? With favor. Opposed, most carries, okay, Corey, now you can go do.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Corey.
BJ, you hear me okay?
Yes, Judge.
Alright, we're going to five point two, discussing considered TGSCP seventy-five, seventy-five Sutton Road. Tax abatement application and incentive recommendation. Good, BJ, good morning.
Thank you, good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners, uh, if you remember recall, uh, the, good morning. The, uh, this application was presented, uh, and accepted, uh, by the court, uh, last court. Uh, TGSCP seventy-five, seventy-five Sutton Road LLC. Um, intends to, uh, build, uh, project, a build-to-suit project for. Uh, a well-known e-commerce retailer, as noted in the recommendations overview, the name of the company is Article. Um, dot com, uh, the facility is going to be a five hundred and seven thousand square foot warehouse storage. Uh, job creation is expected to be forty to fifty full-time jobs in year twenty twenty-two. And expect to grow, uh, to three hundred full-time jobs by, uh, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, and create a hundred construction jobs during development. So what you have before you is a recommendation or an overview of the impact of, of forty-five jobs. As typically has been presented to the court over the last couple of years. You see the direct impact and the indirect impact and the induced impact, um, on an annual basis to the county. Uh, the project has a general multiplier of one point two one. Um, just note to that, uh, the, what is presented today to the court is the, given that the court accepted the application. Last court, uh, the request is to, uh, approve the application, there is an oversight. Um, the intent of the applicant was to request a ten-year tax abatement. Um, and the recommendation is based upon that, but it was not explicitly noted in the. Cover letter that accompanied the, the application, and so the recommendation that is cited or presented to you today. Reflects a ten-year tax abatement consistent with, uh, other projects that. The county has approved similar to these in the logistics and distribution sector.
BJ, do we have an estimate of inventory?
Not as yet, Commissioner, uh, after discussion yesterday, I've been to reach out to get some more details, I think that, uh. TGS is gonna get some more definition around that. I know that, um, you know, the ten-year horizon in and of itself is compared to, um. A five-year tax abatement that the court would, you know, approve generally. Um, the five-year tax abatement, um, averages at about seventy-seven percent abatement over the first five years. Um, this proposed schedule, you know, for, for this project. Over the first five years would result in a fifty-eight percent tax abatement, so. Uh, and then net, you know, fifty-five percent over a ten-year period, so. It's advantageous to the extent that it would provide revenues of the county, starting at the, at the onset. Obviously, the abatement percentage would decrease because of the impact of, of inventory, and this tenant has no intent to pursue a foreign trade zone designation, so. Um, once we, uh, get a feel for what the annual expected inventory would be. Uh, the idea would be to, as we move forward in negotiating the terms of the agreement, to reflect, um, certain inventory minimums that could be expected.
Correct, and, uh, just, I, I don't know if you noticed off the top of your head. But this would be comparable to what we have with Ikea or floor decor, probably on a square foot basis for inventory, you would think.
Yes.
So, uh, we hadn't done a five-year in a while, uh, and, but it's a two-year and a hundred percent abated, correct?
Yes, it's a. The schedule is a hundred, hundred seventy-five, sixty, fifty.
Right, a two-year, seventy-five, sixty.
Okay.
In, in the, in the ten-year, they're sixty, 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 fifty, it drops down.
Yeah, but as, as BJ mentioned, we, we start.
You get more money. No, I just wanted to, uh, and I've been talking to BJ about this. And want to start time more and, you know, get, asking for a minimum guarantee on inventories. You know, so we don't get a situation like we did this year where inventories are down, we start trying to.
Calculate.
Protect from that, so I, I will, I will make a motion that we approve the, uh, abatement based on ten years. With a minimum amount of inventory to be negotiated in the final contract.
Hey, sir. First back, Commissioner Collins, second back, Commissioner Gore. BJ, you give her that motion?
Uh, yes, sir, yes, that's it, to court's discretion.
Alright, any other questions, comments, or none of the favor? Opposed, most carries, five point three, discuss consider. TGSCP seventy-five, seventy-five Sutton Road LLC reinvestment zone application, BJ.
Thank you, Judge, uh, this is a request and application to designate, uh, the TGSCP seventy-five, seventy-five Sutton Road LLC. Twenty-twenty-one reinvestment zone, um, that, that is required by statute to move forward with the tax abatement process. Uh, the request is to, um, schedule a public hearing. Uh, to establish reinvestment zone on the next court, which is October twelve, twenty twenty-one.
So you need a public hearing, October twelve, twenty twenty-one, at ten AM.
Yes, sir.
So move.
Second. First back to Mr. Collins, second back to Mr. Hammond. Any questions? Does the favor, opposed, most carries. Five point four, discuss consider project, futon incentive recommendation, BJ.
Thank you, uh, Judge and Commissioners, uh, this is a, a, another competitive project that is, uh. Looking at citing in Chambers County. And, uh, what we've done in the past is provide the county with an overview of competitive projects and this is consistent with that practice. The project profile is, as noted in the cover letter, this is a distribution center e-commerce fulfillment project. Uh, the prospect's currently evaluating sites in, in Chambers County and Harris Counties, as well as Wilder County. Um, the Chambers County site under consideration for this project is a airport business park. Um, which has been shortlisted. Uh, project futon would be a build-to-suit option, occupying one point zero one million square feet. Uh, the project would create twenty-five to a hundred jobs and invest approximately fifty million dollars in building and equipment. Um, the overview of the economic impacts provided below. Using a midpoint, uh, between twenty-five and a hundred of sixty-three jobs, you know, the direct, indirect induced, uh, impacts. And this project also is in the warehouse and storage sector, which has a multiplier of one point two one. You know, given that, uh, this project again is competing against others, uh, counties. Uh, what's presented for the court's recommendation is consistent with the previous, uh, discussion. Uh, a ten-year tax abatement be considered, um, we're still trying to get, um. Um, inventory, uh, estimates, uh, obviously there's been no final decision. Uh, the court's decision on whether to approve this recommendation will be presented to the prospect for consideration, uh, as part of their site selection. Um, you'll see that, uh, the schedule is, uh, the same as was presented for the TGSCP seventy-five, seventy-five projects.
This is just for, uh, really, thi- thi- this is not really approving anything today, it's just saying. We will, these are the incentives that we would consider.
That, that is correct, contingent upon court approval, yes, sir.
Right, and I'll make the motion that we do the same thing we did with the, uh, previous one. The ten-year with a, uh, inventory amount to be, uh, negotiated.
As a proposal. Huh, you're proposing that?
Yes.
And most of my, Commissioner Collins, second back, Commissioner Tass. Questions, the favor. Opposed, most carries, BJ, thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, uh, I see that, I mean, I hope that you see that, there's a trend that's developing in Chambers County with respect to e-commerce. And furniture retailers and like, which speaks to the. Growth not only in Chambers County, but the greater MSA and the integrated, uh, model that we have, uh, tied to the Port of Houston.
Yeah, when are you gonna get Amazon?
TBD.
Actually, uh, a lot of stuff coming from Amazon is already coming out of, uh, a airport.
Airport.
Located in five sixty-five and, well, I mean, off of twenty-three fifty-four.
Yeah.
BJ?
Yes, sir.
Have we made any progress with those, uh, employment numbers? Or statistics for people working in, uh, living in Chambers County?
I know you. Uh, yes, yes, Commissioner, I, I think the intent is to present that as part of the, uh. Recommendations and review and approval of the tax abatement guidelines, which are required every two years. And that's due in November, however, if you'd like to get them prior to, you would be glad to get that to you.
I'm just, I'm curious, I know we talked about it a couple times, I know you've been working on it, so.
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you, BJ.
Alright, thank you, Judge and Commissioners, take care.
Alright, one point two, public hearing, ten thirty AM, discussing twenty-twenty-one tax rate of. One five three nine four nine for one hundred, it's now ten fifty-four AM, we will recess. Out of the regular session and go into public hearing at this time. Uh, Eric.
Uh, yes, sir, so we are looking at a tax rate at point five three nine four nine zero, which is the same tax rate as. This year, um, there's no change, um, this is below our effective and rollback rate, um. Any questions, I can try and answer those.
Any public comments? Here now, we'll turn on the public hearing at ten fifty-four AM. And go back into regular session of Commissioners Court. One point three, discuss consider adopting the two twenty-twenty-one tax rate, a point five three nine four nine per one hundred. First back, Commissioner Tass.
Second.
Second back, Commissioner Hammond, questions on tax rate? I would just probably could not have any interest this year. And with the drop in value.
Awesome.
Sue likes it too, those are favorite.
Thank you, sir.
Motion carrying one point four, discuss consider adopting the twenty-twenty-two Chambers County budget there.
Yes, sir, so, um, unfortunately I don't have the packet, but I'll, I'll send that out, make sure it's online for everyone to look at, um, today. Um, in general, you've got a ninety-six million dollar budget that includes the general fund, Rudden Bridge. Enterprise fund, which was the airport, golf, salt waste. And school equalization fund and our debt, so that's about ninety-six million dollars. Uh, and then that includes about six and a half million dollars for capital projects, which is splash pads, new equipment. Uh, replacements for, for the department, uh, new radios. A, a new set of officer body worn cameras for the sheriff's office. Uh, bohrams in the Cullen Park and some building repairs. You also got for this next year, you budget of twelve new people. Uh, ranging from district clerk to IT, the law support staff people, um, that's gonna be about. Including benefits, about nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. Uh, you got a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars worth of salary adjustments and you gave three and a half percent across the board raise for every county employee. Um. Those are probably the, the big, big highlights of the budget, um. Questions, I can try and answer those.
Yeah, we had a lot of budget hearing, some workshops, so, um, budget workshop.
The, um. Tax of projects, the, um, ball fields and this, that's not included in that nice.
No, no, sir, no, sir, yes, sir, uh, they're not included, it's just a separate fund, so I just try to. When I get the budget numbers, I try to stay consistent with tax money related, uh.
So that's basically the general fund?
General fund, Rudden Bridge, the enterprise funds.
Health circle.
Equalization.
School, yes, school and our debt, not health services.
It does not include health services.
No, sir, and I, I can get that all combined up real quick for y'all.
So did you mention that we're budgeting some money to move forward on the Justice Center?
Oh, I, I'm no, sir, I didn't.
So, do we want to finish, uh, we want to finish getting the properties and, um. And go to some point in the design, um, so we'll be that much further ahead when we go to bond, so. Um, we've got some money to do that. And to move the library if possible, if, you know, it's. You really talk about it a little air, if you'd like to.
No, I mean, I think you got it right, I just, you know, getting things ready to go, even if it's not constructed, but, you know, some design.
And that's something that you can pay yourself back on when you get a bond or a perk.
We're like, we're like in maybe November next year.
Uh, yeah, it, it kind of depends on the tenure plan, that nice is working, um.
Where are we on that? He was only, he's supposed to submit it to us within, what, about sixty days? Where are we on that? He was only, he's supposed to submit it to us within, what, about sixty days?
Uh, he said he's close. I talked to him this week.
I think we're still trying to make a may.
So it'll be November. So, yeah, but I think that's okay. We budgeted some, we can go ahead and move forward with the design and be that much further ahead. Because y'all know that my prices of materials are going up. The longer we wait, the longer the mortgage cost us.
The Justice Center and everything will be built here anyway. Nothing there.
We're purchasing the property.
Nothing there has changed. So everybody understands that. It's being built here. We need to move forward with it. I mean, we're having to deal with inmate situations now, females, having to spend, a million dollars of board building a facility to house females now, not including what we're doing.
We're hoping it's gonna be less than that. We're hoping it's gonna be less than that. I met with them this past week. The sheriff and, uh, progress thinks they can get it down.
So, uh, henceforth, we can't make the may. What's our timeline to start the process for November?
We need to have everything finished, um, for the ballot for November by about the fifteenth of August. Ballots will go out, um, for our overseas military, uh, mid-September, so.
So we should have plenty of time. So that ten-year financial plan, we get it, I say we move forward.
Right, because there's will be probably other things on there in addition to just the Justice Center. And, you know, I think it's very important that we set up some public meetings, you know, with the, and get out and let people know what we're doing and really try to spread the word around and. Now, our, there's our.
Architects.
Architect is gonna do all that. That's part of the deal. And so they will.
Well, they'll just hold meetings, but they'll actually hold meeting. As part of the process. And we, we've still got to come to, uh, an agreement on the contract with HOK. You know, we approved them, and the, the contract kind of set aside because they hadn't moved on it, but we need to move on. I know you know that, but I thought I mentioned.
Yeah, I talked to Nathan yesterday, and he said he was, rounding up a few more documents that he needed, so, but he is, he's steady on that, trying to get that done, so. That's good. But, yeah, we, we gotta get to, we gotta get the word out to the public what we're trying to do. You know, so we get, get some feedback and, and buy-in from the public, so.
Yeah.
It always seems to be a difficult task.
It's been a nightmare, Jim.
That's true. Thought about, maybe having.
Well, we gotta, we gotta get away from a, mobile office business too, so. That costs us a ton of money that we don't, we're not gonna get back, so.
Yeah, we'll get a part of it back.
Yeah, you get real good. You ain't getting much.
Right.
All right, I entertain a motion to one point. I already got a motion. No.
Did we vote on the tax rate?
No, I'm sitting here. Uh, yeah, we're all on tax rates. Uh, motion by Commissioner Gore to approve the twenty, uh, one four, discuss considering about the twenty twenty-two Chambers County budget. Motion by Commissioner Gore.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Hammond, does the favor. Opposed, most curious. Aaron, good job. Commissioners, good job.
Right here.
You're working hard on it.
Just me, we never too, you know?
Yeah. All right, I think we're down to consent. Oh, the, the one from the chair? Uh, let me get, let me get a copy of the care up, sorry. Uh, uh, public committee, Heather Hotfong, County Clerk, coming on National Voter Registration Day.
Thank you, Judge. Today is National, uh, good morning, everyone, and good morning, Chambers County. Today is National Voter Registration Day. Currently in Chambers County, we have thirty-one thousand, six hundred and nineteen registered voters. That's as of this morning. Um, we average about a hundred new registrations a month. So, we're rocking and rolling, no doubt, on our voter registration. We have partnered with the Chambers County Library System under the amazing leadership of Valerie Jensen, who is such a wonderful asset to our county. Um, so people can go to register to vote at any one of the three libraries. Those librarians, assistant librarians are ready. Uh, they've been trained. They're ready to take your voter registration form and get it to us. It's quick, it's easy. Uh, you can also come here to the courthouse to register to vote, and we will, on the third floor, we will get you set up. So just to note that today, I challenge everyone to go out and find somebody that isn't registered to vote, and help them get that done. Uh, we have an upcoming election for the constitutional amendments, and then, of course, we're waiting on redistricting to set the primary date. So all of those things are happening in the elections world. Um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna make another quick comment. We're also.
You didn't write it down.
I, I'll add it to my form. We're also in the middle of brand renewal. Um, brands are up every ten years for renewal, and unfortunately, it's been kind of slow out of the gate. I know a lot of things have been happening, but we only have eighty-five out of over our seven hundred plus brands that have been renewed. So just encouraging that, uh, as the public watches this YouTube video, that they realize that they do have until February to renew their brands. So we're just hoping to get the word back out. I've, I've sent a letter to all seven hundred plus people, but anything we can all do to help on the brand registration. Those brands are important. I know they're important to the ranchers, and they're also important to our sheriff's office as well. I think that's all the announcements I have for today, sir.
When are the voters gonna be able to vote countywide, I think, one election day?
So countywide voting, voting was approved by the Secretary of State's office. Our application was approved. And so we will be doing that for the first time in this upcoming election. So on election day, you do not have to vote in your precinct. You can vote at any of the locations that are posted on our website. We're hoping for great turnout, uh, as far as it being a constitutional amendment election. Uh, and then we have to go back and report to the Secretary of State's office how it went, pros, cons, anything like that, get some feedback from voters. Uh, and then, so we will apply for a permanent status for the primary. Because just because you do it once doesn't mean you're automatically every single time until you get permanent status. So we're really hoping, obviously, for permanent status for the primary.
If you're gonna need a couple voters registration cards, I got a new neighbor, so.
Um, Tom, and did you have a question?
We didn't. Any idea when we would get our numbers, so we can redistrict?
So the preliminary maps have come out for, I don't know if you saw that on the news, uh, for the new, uh, congressional seats. The Senate looks like they, the Texas Senate looks like they've made great headway on their maps. Um, the House is still working on theirs, um, and we're still working on ours. I'm constantly in contact with our attorney that you all hired for redistricting. Um, so, you know, they, they keep pushing that date back, Commissioner, and it's frustrating on my end, as it is everybody else.
Yeah, we're working with the preliminary numbers. Actually, Manhattan was given to Austin a few weeks ago.
So when do you think the court will actually see something?
I'm hoping by our, according to our council, we're hoping by the end of October to start really having something. So another thirty days, hopefully, we're, you know, we're, we're one of many clients, and of course, because everything has crunched, exactly. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That won't affect the upcoming November.
Not at all. The upcoming election has nothing to do with, right, or redistricting. And, and if I can, uh, gently remind you all that we will be adding two new precincts, no matter what, to our redistricting, because we pushed that back from this past April. So we know we're already adding two additional precincts, um, for beginning next year. We're growing.
So other than, uh, other than the one forty-sixth area, are we short on polling places anywhere else?
Uh, no, sir. No, sir. We, we, once we get the, um, Cove Building complete, and the one forty-sixth building complete, we will be set up for growth, exactly.
Seventy percent of the population on the west side, maybe?
Oh, I didn't.
I mean, I'm just, yes.
Yeah.
Seventy percent on the west side, seventy percent of the population.
That's gonna be about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, let's go to consent, person one. Three.
Good.
Four.
I'm always guessing.
Come on, man.
No, man. Why on the legal fees, uh, often wonder, why do we spend so much money on arboretum and legal fees? What is it that just makes us spend seven thousand dollars? Attorney's fees.
That's all the quip.
Huh?
It's all the quip program. That's Nathan working with, uh, Arboretum and Nikki.
But what's an agreement is done? I mean, why does it keep reoccurring?
Yeah.
Brennamar, never mind, now, no.
Okay, that's what it is.
It, it just. It's just expensive.
And that's, you, you know, it is, and attorneys are expensive, you're right. All right, whatever.
Okay, on, uh, aisle number nineteen, the Texas state Texans, I was just curious on that funding. Where else do they get funding from, other than, what the county gives more grants?
I think the only other funding they get is HTAC, and that, our part is to match the HTAC grant.
All right, and then on the sheriff's new, uh, safe boat, congratulations, Sheriff. I'm, I'm just curious of where we want to be, uh, storing that thing and operating expense on that thing. Do we budget anything for it?
He's wondering the same thing.
Yeah.
And he's at a funeral this morning for, one of his deputy's father passed away. I don't know if it was mentioned earlier, Barbara and, and, um, Mont Belvieu.
Oh, he's on, uh, the jailers.
Yes. Yes, so.
Yes, y'all remember, they went to pray this, um, the funerals this morning, that, uh, very beloved Barbara, in Barbara's Hill. Barbara isn't cutting hair, Barbara, not in Barbara. Same.
I understand what Barbara's Hill is all saying.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and on the aisle number twenty-nine, the, uh, body worn cameras. You know, I, I get what he's doing there, but can we, the way that twenty thousand dollars is coming out of twenty-two budget, but it looks like we're approving it now. How are we shuffling that around? How does that work?
Aaron, you back there?
I think Chief, Chief.
Now, we can.
Chief LaJia yesterday, and I think he said they had money in this budget for that.
Well, with sound, I guess, going to decrease the twenty-two budget.
Yeah.
The body worn, twenty thousand dollars, that he's going ahead and extending now that we were.
Oh, he wanted to budget in twenty-two, but he's got the money now to do it twenty-one.
So we're gonna do it one it now, and we'll take the twenty thousand off the twenty-two budget. Is that right, Aaron?
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't read.
So. Yeah, we can talk to the chief about it, but it looks like, um, the twenty, twenty-two budget, they requested these cameras.
Right.
Okay, but now they found the money to get it out of this budget, so.
Okay.
So he said he had two officers and two cars that wasn't equipped.
Right.
And he didn't want to buy the current equipment, because we're gonna change it over in January or so.
And that makes sense.
So he said he had the money to buy these two, and it also gives them initial.
So he bought it out of twenty-one budget, not out of twenty.
He get the contract signed, get that process started.
So we're good, and we've already approved the budget. I mean, if there's extra twenty thousand, like.
No, I'm good, I'm good with. I was just curious. It looked like we were trying to spend twenty-two budget money when I.
Okay, I got it. Anything else? I entertain a motion. Question by Commissioner Gore, second back Commissioner Hammond, little favor. Opposed, most curious. That's the record, it reflects, it's the record. We don't have anything for, for executive session, as far as I know. All right, then we are down to eleven thirteen, eight AM. Congratulations.
If Sue would have got up there and did some.